We have four threads that everybody here has heard of the American Propet and called a public meeting or the public hearing for order. I just want this to be known that this is the only thing that gets discussed during this meeting. What is on this agenda? The public hearing is four by state statute. Number one, town borough will be conducting a public hearing to consider three requests for a conditional use permit. One at 199 Palomino Drive, two at 463 Palomino Drive, and number three, 260 Home Stretch. The intent at all three locations is to operate a commercial livestock operation, which includes horse breeding, foaling, boarding, and a training facility in the area zone that's residential. At this time, I would entertain someone from one of these three groups to start the meeting. Please come to the podium and start. Please say your name and which address is yours.
My name is Sean Vaughn at 463 Palomino Drive. I'm here to ask for a conditional use permit for allowing me for boarding, allowing me to credit the mares, foaling and pulling them out. We're also raising them with the intent of selling foals. That's just the list. I'm no longer trying, so I'll do any trying to do. Approximately how many horses do you have in your property? My ultimate goal is 25 horses, but now I have beyond that at 35.
How big is she, please?
It's just about six acres.
You guys, you guys want us to do, uh, raise some more horses?
I can make a big jump. If I may, I'll walk through my goals and my plan. I have a heart fence, wire fence all the way around my property. I have 20 feet that I still need to fix. Other than that, it's heart fence and inside I make individual pens with hot wire. We do that right now because everywhere I keep my horses at the moment, bloods go to the spring. It's traditional, it blows and it floods out. So I have to move strategically move horses there. My long-term goal is I'm going to alter in, starting in the spring to level it a lot so that I can put some actual things in and defend my horses off the ditch. I also plan to have to build a barn, at least one more barn. I have to, I'll have at least one stall for every horse I have on the property. I have half of that now. So I'll be home in the base during the spring I have planned for. I've got a date to talk about the off-lead, get rid of the cacti so we can keep it on. Once I get it built up, then I'll fix it up with, with a good pipe fence. We haven't actually decided where we wanted, want to build all of those pens because we want to keep them off the frontage as far back as possible. If you've seen the client's place, that's kind of what we're going to try to mimic. Keep our horses back off the property. Have it actually yarded, not getting the front yard, only horses in back. We do for right now, we have, like I said, I do fly predators, tons of. I have mosquito killers all over my area. I have 10 of them. And we have zero problems with mosquitoes this year. Very, very few. And I do know that we have West Nile there, so that wasn't an issue this year. All of our horses that we have there are all up to date on all shots. Make sure that they are all vet cared, their feet are done. They will operate. There are some things I can improve, but I want to look at it and that's just as we go. When I bought the place, it was set up how it's set up. And as I, as this continues on, we'll get better and better every year. And I think it will attest that we constantly working to improve the property. And that would be cool.
Can I just say something?
Go ahead.
So speaking about this property, we've been out there, I've been out there. To the owner before and with these guys. And the owner before had four horses on about six acres. And it was so much worse than it is now even with 35. That the four horses were not taken care of, like they just weren't. And the place was absolutely overgrazed. She didn't feed hay like it's. And then on top of it, they left a mess. You inherited quite a mess. You'd think that going from four to 35 would be in the wrong direction, but it is completely the opposite. We have way less flies. Like I look out my fence and I don't worry about what I see. Every horse is well taken care of, their feet are done, their teeth are done, they're medicated, they're at. They sneeze, they go to the vet. Like it is, they take such good care of their horses. That I would much, much, much rather be a neighbor with somebody who's taking care of 35 than somebody who's in a block from your barn. And so I, I get the numbers, it's a dramatic shift. I walk that fence line between us, oh my gosh, six times a day. And it's, it's so much better. It really is. So I really appreciate the flying management. I appreciate the fence management. Like it's, I, it has been a dramatic difference and thank you guys, I really appreciate it. So.
Just one other thing, we need you to state your name and your address, just so we know.
I'm sorry, Janeway 411 Palomino.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, and I, you know, we heard Sean's talking about that. You mentioned that sometimes in the spring your horses flood. What kind of mitigation do you do so that the manure doesn't flow down, get into ditch and travel with somebody else or get in the water?
Yeah, and so what, what we do is I drag everything. I'll drag it out and then I'll bucket it and take it out. When it does look like that, there's nothing you can do until I do get it built up. And that's used for all the properties. I mean, the tow is actually built up. And that's, that's in the works.
For the record, could you please state your name and address?
Scott, 752 Palomino Drive.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussions?
You know, one question I have is like manure control. How do you get the manure off your property? Obviously you drag a little bit. Thirty horses produce a lot more in manure than you can drag.
Right, right now, it's pretty easy to, to level it out in pastures because they're sitting so low. But once I start home in the end of the spring, then I'll drag it. I'll take it right down to the level. Then I'll have to do it religiously. It'll be a lot, a lot of work, yes. We should have less horses, I'm hoping. I'm going to try to manage it to where it looks good and, you know. And, and I've also talked to Janeway a bit and had him at my house and we've walked through the property. I gave him my idea and I think that we have a good plan for, for future to, to take care of and problems.
For the record, the disposal of the manure will be held where?
Goes to the dump.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
We're just asking, so, uh, Palomino. Uh, you have what, 20 horses now?
Thirty, 35, yeah, 35, so.
How much hay do you feed about a semi lowland? What's your, how much, how many can?
It's about 26, so.
Okay. So that's a long manure.
Yeah, I wrote the horse, uh, weighs about 50 pounds of manure a day. Yeah, they, they eat a lot and they, they do come through a lot.
Any other questions or discussions? Okay, thank you for your testimony. This being said, we'll move to the next person. Wanted a conditional, conditional use permit.
Hello, my name is Dominguez. We live in, uh, Palomino. We also do obviously this great sort of business, you know. I will say most everything that we have our house, it's all privately owned horses, you know. We, we live in Utah. We do have, we do have a train. Yeah, we do have a train, basically we train horses, but typically every racehorse is trained. It's down, you know, in, in Utah. Up here we have breed batch babies and our dad, it's actually, you know, it's, it's our passion, you know. We, we've been up here for, what, four or five years?
We're on five years with this place. We actually own the property at Xo, which is not in there. 199 Palomino is our mailing address, so it's two.
So you know, 199 Palomino and 265.
Yeah, so I did go 199, so I guess I should probably go along with them, yeah.
Yeah, we, you know, we, we, uh, go see this part of our property. We have, throughout both properties, we run about five pastures. We, we fluctuate horses from, from place to place. Every horse, every pasture gets moved to a state. You know, we don't typically graze. I mean, they have the right to graze, but I don't turn it into a five property. We have a, 24/7. We, we care a lot about our horses, you know. And then, you know, when mares have babies, we take them down to Utah because we have our vets down there. That's what we do, our vet work. We have our vet, I love a couple of times a year to make sure everything looks good. Frank Jeffmair and so on and so forth. You know, we, we, we applied for this permit, but not really. I mean, we're happy to do this. This is more of a privately owned deal, you know. Every horse there, you know, it's all ours, you know. We got, we're, we're in love with it, you know.
You'll see ponies, our babies are out from both, and I also, if you're a parent, if you've got a baby that's in a pasture, you got to bring it back.
I think we've read one hop fence. Everything else isn't either panels or wire fence or, you know, metal fence.
We also have tried to, uh, keep, like, we, we bought this house that was in a little bit of a rough condition and we tried to, to make, we, we tried to keep it up. We don't, they're like I said, the house, we don't live in there. We use it just more or less for the Italian form of waters.
I'm, I'm sorry, old Sancho's place. Okay, I think they're armed, right?
And then across, yeah, we're armed most of the time.
Back to that great house, that's right.
Correct, yeah. We, I mean, we've tried to do, you know, tried to do as many improvements as we can. We have horses up here. During the spring, it gets pretty bad, you know, as, as mares foal. We take them down to Utah and then we do a lot of moving around. And there's times up here we don't have hardly, hardly any horses, you know. This time of year, this is, you know, we turn out horses to, to rest during winter. This is when we use the property the most.
Then across, can you help me get up right now?
There's two different properties, there's about 20 on each side right now. But that's currently, we have rare horses turned out because we took down trees at our house in Utah. So we have a whole hole right now, but we just took down 10 trees at our house, two trees at our house. So those can be actually moved right back out in November.
We're always open to suggestions and I'm ready to have a meeting. And I've had, if we have, yeah, I could, we're absolutely, we just, we're always open. And then we need to do a nice, comfortable, you know.
Well, I've just heard about how many you've got right now on the farm. What are you hoping to get your numbers down to?
Well, it's, it's, it's a different, I mean, we, we raise horses, you know, some are born, we have some here, we have a bunch of foals. And I don't have that many foals. Typically give to family, I mean, this is something, you know, a lot of our family owns a lot of our horses.
Just a little bit more fish, I mean.
They're, they're usually not coming there. I would say right now that it's part of their, like, I could do it sometimes. We treat them at Utah and we took everything out, so we don't have any problems.
Right.
Because our neighbors into us and we have problems.
You know, I, yeah, I, I, this is just a place that we try to do.
This is not really for the market overall, I guess, but, yeah.
Go ahead, Dave.
So, so you're saying all these horses that are, you're taking along a new fence?
Yes.
So you're not targeting anybody, is that selling the foals or?
Well, we do sell, but I mean, that's so different than like, because I run barrel, like, you know. That's the same thing as barrel and all horses, but like the horses that are on that property are, are ours.
Everything, we, we run, this year we ran 15 of our own, you know, it's, it's just. It's like, you know, it's.
I don't think they apply, I don't think that's what I'm doing.
But, I mean, I will say, I mean, there's, there's times that we'll have a horse there for a friend, you know. I mean, it's not, every horse is always there is ours, you know. But I mean, like my dad has a horse there now, obviously, because we, you know, if that, if you want to sound that's commercial, you know. But it's essentially, this is what we do for our, our living, you know.
That's, that's the issue right now. We only have two properties in Barrio industrial. And we've got a couple of properties in the park. Everything else is on residential. And we are his only workers, just recently got done with. If we, if you ever receive any kind of compensation, whether it's a trade, cash, whatever, then it's a business. So I, I just have to, you know, get, get through that one for these guys to do business. Is it a business?
We train horses.
Yeah, we train horses. If we have a business like in Utah, that's the same exact thing.
All the horses that we train, all our racehorses that we train for outside people. We, we don't have, we have stalls here, but they're, they're used only for our group of mares and people. We don't use ourselves here. All our racehorses, they're at home or when we go run, and obviously I'm sure you guys remember with races here. We, we sell on the racetrack. We either sell on the racetrack or up down in, in Utah, you know. I call it a home, sorry. This is our home also, but. I mean, I, I would, I would like to have the permit because I, I understand the legality of it. We make our, obviously, we do make insurance, you know. But this is majority, you know, it's majority, this is, is almost all for ourselves.
Okay, any other questions?
I, I just have a comment. Most of the mares that are in the area, some of them have never returned. They leave Wyoming January, February, March and don't come back until August. That's, that's.
We try and let our, our pastures have a break, you know. During, in the spring, when we do, we return, you know, take mares down to Utah and, and then we'll go through and break all our fields, let it grow a little bit. And then, like he says, August, we start, usually start bringing mares back in. But we always, even, even when we turn mares out right at the beginning, we keep a couple of them. They have a whole time and we've, we've had twelve bells. Just, it would be twice a week, you know, we feed it time.
And for the record, we need you to state your name, um, Sean Vaughn, sorry.
That's right.
Any other discussion? May I ask a question? You may.
So we asked Sean about his mitigation for boarding the manure and why suppression. If, and I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
You're Dominguez. You already know Dominguez?
Okay, thank you. If, if you could, Mayor, if they could explain.
So, yeah, we don't, we don't use the irrigation ditch for any type, any, any irrigation. We keep water tanks in front of all our mares and all our pastures. I mean, they have the choices over there, but like horses like, you know, they like to keep their water that they keep in front of them, you know. But they won't even walk across that. They can now get over, there's a piece of ground and that's got full of grass. They, they don't like it by the water, you know, but, uh, between that and, uh, that's, we have one corner that it goes by and, I mean, I guess it goes back on the back part of two pasture.
It goes to another corner, but they don't, they don't go by it.
They don't, they don't, they don't typically go over there. We don't, we don't have them near the, the canal for the most part. And obviously they can and you do, you know, but, uh, we don't ever flood. It never floods the horses, because actually we're, it goes down into the canal on our backside. So it's, and, and we never have any conflict with it in our property, so. But, um.
And your removal and also what you do with flies?
So most of our pastures, or most of our pens still have grass out there because the mares, they, they like to, we're reach those out, but we have. We do raise them all and usually works as a good, you know, for the, for the, for the pasture. But we do haul off a lot of them, you know, we have, whenever we need to, we haul off a bit more. Whenever our hay piles get a little bad, we usually clean that up. We care about our horses a lot, you know.
And lastly, your flies?
We have, we don't typically do anything, I'm not going to lie to you, we don't typically do anything with flies. If anything, that scared me a little bit before. I, I worry about what the, what the health concern is with, with flies, you know. Typically, we have an issue with flies, you know, I addressed that, but most of these horses are down. Being horses, you know, we don't, we don't worry about the flies too much. If we have horses in the barn and there's flies, we'll put fly traps up where we need to, but all these horses are mostly turned out, you know. We try to keep them, they're not, we don't want to see our horses in, in mud and, and that.
There are up to 28 stalls on our place as well, that have been managed to two properties that we use basically only one barn as a whole. So, but there is stalls for that, um, these are the two properties.
Okay, we're, we're happy to do anything to do that we have to do to, to help any health concerns by means, you know. But that, you know, it's no different than anybody that has some, dogs or trash or, you know, I mean. We do the same, I mean, anything that, if it bothers our horses, we'll, we'll take care of it, you know. It doesn't bother any horses.
Is there any other discussion? Do you state your name and your question, please?
My name's Crystal Labor. My address, 232 Palomino Drive. I'm directly across from Mary Old and Calis Place. And the last five years, they're the best neighbor. And the horses are fed, they're fat, they love life. There's no complaint and the flies never. So I don't want to throw it, you want to throw the bus, but the previous owners of that place, it was disgusting with sheep and sheep when you were, and they cleaned all of that up and it's just, it's so much better. And they really do love their horses and take care of them. They're always, you know.
Yeah, we, uh, when we bought the place, we tore down some stuff. And we had four foot of, of sheep, you know, manure. And we, we, we had to clean up because we care about our horses, we're going to find our horses, their cakes get sick. And so we try and take care of the best that we can.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, thank you for your time.
Rachel Hopkins, 260 Home Stretch. Um, we are applying for a conditional use permit for our boarding and breeding facility. We do not train any of our employees. Everything's either Australian, Red Bear, Waken Pole. Um, we do have clients, we do have main clients. Currently we have 21. Max would be 30. We have permanent fencing all the way around. I'm sure that you've seen that we have done a lot of continuous fencing so that we're able to dry a lot more, um, be able to rest it around, let it, so we can graze. We also lease the pasture next to us, so I don't even know how many acres that is this day. I'm not, so between our nine, our nine, 18 acres, 21 more acres. Um, we haul off our manure at least twice a year. We haul it off for the city bill. Probably haul it off more if we're able to get up and down the hill. Yeah.
Is that irrigation mower?
We have an irrigation ditch that runs through. Everything is well set back from the irrigation ditch. We don't irrigate. We get more groundwater.
And how your ditch looks like, are they, they're not, they're not going to flood?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we have the ditch that runs through and in fact, we have lots of water right now.
It's a hard word, dude.
Well, we're not. But we have a holder that runs across, so we don't go through the ditch. Horses don't touch the ditch. There's not even a horse remotely within 15, 20 acres.
How are the fly situations?
We really don't have many flies. The only flies that we have are in the barn. We set up fly traps just like we want. But we haul off our manure enough that drag our fields, I drag them three, four times a year or so. Everything's well fed and fat and happy.
Any other questions from the gallery? Is there any other discussion? Thank you for your time. Thank you. We have any other discussion from the gallery? Uh, do you state your name or address? Scott, 752 Palomino. So this is for an action item tonight and you'll either approve or disapprove tonight. Yes, okay. So going back to my earlier comment about the potential impact on future property tax assessment. If you approve this tonight and it turns out that there is potential impact on increasing property taxes in the future, I'd be really unhappy. I'd at least like to know before you approve it. Once you approve it, it's done. You know, this is called a conditional use permit. At any time, this can be revoked. But in fairness to the people involved, if you've given them the, go ahead now and they reliance upon that, do whatever they're going to do, even knowing that it can be revoked. Would it really be fair if it turns out that there was some significant potential for property tax assessment increases to come back and tell them you're taking their permits away? I understand your feelings and your concern. But most of this is all theoretical. I don't think it's theoretical, the way the assessors perform their assessments. Okay, and I don't think it's theoretical that the local governments are concerned about the shortfall in their budgets. They will look for ways to recoup that. And one of the ways to do that is to determine that commercial properties now are increasing the highest invest use in this area. And that means my property, everybody else's property out here can go up. And if you think that they won't use that opportunity, I think you're being naive. Once again, that's theoretical. You're thinking I'm being naive. Yes, I think you are because that's what is driving a lot of the concerns about the loss of property tax. And there will be attempts to find ways around it. And an easy way around that is to increase evaluations because you are about proposed to turn this into a commercial place, not residential place. That's not the right. Okay, we're not going to argue back and forth with this and you're not going to call me naive. For one, you're not going to tell me, you're like my father, you're going to tell me how to talk to you. Naive is an appropriate term if you.
So, so if I may, if I may?
Yes.
We want to keep things kind of common here and we don't want to attack each other, please. I think we're, 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 we're creating a different, we need to keep it that way. I do know as far as property values go, one of the ways that the assessor does determine property values is based on the sale of the property. It's not based on the use of the property. And so, for example, your property, if you go and sell for, let's just say a million and five, the assessor takes the value of your property and then determines all the similar properties at the same value. And at that point, then our property taxes go up. We saw this happen a couple of years ago with one particular house town here that sold for an exceptionally higher amount than what homes have been selling for in this community. The second that homes sold for that higher amount, all our property taxes went up immediately the next year. And so there is some validity to your fears and concerns there as far as what the assessors and what the governments might do in the future. Um, but I do know as far as that aspect, because I, I've spent a lot of time with the assessor for the last couple of months talking property taxes. Um, and it is a valid fear because people like the money, right? We like to keep our money in our properties. Government likes to take our money. And so any way that we can keep our money is a very valid, valid conversation there. Um, and so that's just one aspect that I know property values is that it's more of the sell, not so much the use of the property. And what, what they value is that, what they see is value to that property at that point.
But isn't it true that the assessors can use highest and best regardless of what you do? And it takes place before any sale? You're correct about the sales. But the other way that they can increase your assessment is to base it on highest and best views, whether or not you are doing any of this commercialization. Because if somebody in your area is doing that, that means as long as the other properties have the potential to do it, that the assessor can assess yours based on the value of the other properties. And I don't think it only occurs because the statute council can tell me if I'm wrong. The assessor makes a reevaluation every year and every six years they come out personally and spec. If every year they make an evaluation and there are three or four of these properties here, I believe it is not only possible, but my belief is it is likely that they will use that as an avenue to increase everybody else's. And what I would like to do, this is what I asked earlier, is get a firm answer. Maybe somebody talks to the assessor and says, is that something that can happen? And what's the likelihood? Then if they say that, that will never happen or very unlikely, then I don't have the concern. But right now, I don't think anybody from the council can ensure me that it won't happen. And if you can't give me that assurance, I would like you to go and check and come back before you do the approvals. I think that's fair.
Do you, do you got any, do you know what I was?
Yes. Fair amount of this is from memory, working as a county assessor. Wyoming has on property taxes in a combination of ways. First, uh, the use of property, but it's actually a classification of use. There's residential, there's agriculture, there's commercial, there's industrial. Uh, we also have mine extractions and that really doesn't impact the people as much. And then you set the valuation. Everything that agricultural is set based on valuations and the use, what is called, uh, computer assisted C A M A, computer assisted mass appraisal systems. That's been approved by the Supreme Court to have consistent. That's where the sale price of similar properties goes into this and that's where it generates it out. But it will go by residential. There is potentially a risk for people who get the conditional use permits to have their property identified as commercial. Um, that, that's possible. But the only, only place where the best use comes into it is on agricultural ground. Agricultural ground, they can assess by best use rather than, uh, the mass appraisal based on sales price. That's all done by valuation. The best use is, is kind of a step back because if somebody is not utilizing their agricultural land in a way that they could, they don't get to claim, well, it's not, it's not worth as much. Um, they're able to raise that assessment based on the best use of what it could be used. But that is the only time a best use comparison is used in Wyoming assessments that I am aware of. It's just agricultural designated lands. Everything else, um, is not individual properties, but mass based on the sales price comparisons. So if I understand, the people out here with just residential, not commercial, would be not affected by these properties. If they sell their property, that sells higher and it's still classified as residential, that certainly could affect. But they, they, it's affected by the sales prices of similar situation in, in properties. Um, and if it's changes to a commercial use and recognize, I would say, the location that doesn't have a home on it, I don't know if you have a home or, or if it's just set up the whole thing. But those kinds of things would, would probably have a better chance of being recognized as commercial. And that still is done by valuation, except it's at a higher, you know, for every hundred dollars valuation, um, I, I'm thinking commercial, you take eleven and a half percent of an applied tax on that level. Uh, residential, I believe is down lower, that, that was, the section was cut in half. And industry, I think that also might be eleven and a half percent they, they take in. But it's all based on valuation of similarly situated properties run through the, uh, computer assisted mass assessments. Because our constitution mandates that all similar properties have to be valued similar. And the Supreme Court has allowed that mass appraisal as an accepted way to maintain that all similar properties are, are praised similar. And so practically, I know you where the county does, but I think every county in the state town uses that C A M A, C A M A system. I, I said as a, as a hearing officer in Leighton County for those types of things. So I believe every, every county, county uses it, but it's based on valuation, based on comparable sales, but not property specific like an assessor, not an assessor, like an appraisal would do. It's fed into the system and it has across the board. And should know if I can ask another question to council. So if I understand, will these properties, if they get these conditional permits? And if they operate in the way they indicate, are they going to stay and then they, they sell? I do not know. That is up to the assessor and that's going to be up to the assessor of how they classify. I'm sorry if I'm jumping out. How they classify and the assessor gets to make that call on their own. And no matter what they tell me upfront or, or on the backside, they'll make that, that decision, um, at, at the time. If it's classified as residential and it sells for a higher price, you would be able to try and make an argument, uh, and appeal if it goes higher. But if it sells at a higher price, that is going to, um, affect every property that's classified as residential and then similarly situated.
I would just want to clarify. All these properties are zoned residential. And every, almost every year, they turn to you. The county wants to see our zoning map and where our current standing is. Now, what you're talking about, you assess commercial properties and such. This property, whether it sells or stays in one family for years, it's going to be zoned residential until this government body changes.
Well, I'm sorry, you're, you're.
Sorry, I, I don't mean to cut in. I just, your thing is I, I, to clarify, our, our property has a home on it, you know, and, and we're always getting this permit so that we can continue to do what we love and raise horses, you know, but, um, if, if I may, I just, I want to clarify, we're, we're not trying to make a property as commercial property. We're just trying to get permits, continue to do what we like to do, you know? Uh, if I like to, you know, build bird boxes and I had to get a permit to build bird boxes in my garage and do that if I had to, you know what I mean? Uh, essentially that's all I'm doing, you know? Uh, this is something I do myself, you know, I just, I, I don't know that. I wanted to make sure, we're not trying to make these commercial properties, correct? Yeah, I'm just trying to use the property as well.
Which leads me to my question is on here, we've got a label that's commercial livestock operations. Why do we have commercial?
Is this on our title or what?
Right. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is why do we have that one looking to say livestock operations? I'm wondering if the, the commercial is maybe.
It, it's still commercial, but we're allowing them to run a commercial on a residential property. And so instead of changing our zoning to where we change our property commercial, we're allowing the property value to be a residential.
Right, and that's all we want to make sure is that it's a residential. I just don't know why we have commercial and it can just be a livestock operation, but. I understand.
It's kind of language of business basically, just indicating there's.
It's my understanding, and Dave and I have, uh, dual thoughts on this, but it's my understanding that the assessor is not bound by how the local governments. They make the determination of what it should be by the use that they seeing it, see it being put towards. And so the designation of commercial and our zoning maps, that, that's more for our regulations and what can be used. And I know that it is heavily influential of the zoning maps for the assessor, but I do not think it binds the assessor to make one type of determination or another when it comes to classification. I agree. Mr. White.
Uh, what I do want to say is I really appreciate the look at the taxes, like that it, that is important. But if I understood it right, the cap's already out of the bag. These are not new businesses. I, I mean, Shawna's been operating for three years. Like you guys have been there, so it's not, it's not, like it's already done. It, even if they do assess that way, it's already done. Whether they have our little business permit and stamp of approval, it doesn't matter. It's, it's a business, it was, it's already been, it's already been a business. So I.
Mr. Dominguez? I, I wanted to say, uh, you know, this, uh, you know, if we, if we had road courses and I like to train road courses for my, my own road course and I went one or, yeah, bought some more, made some money out of that. You know, would I have to get this, you know, this commercial permit? You know, I, I'm just curious, you know? I, I know that, I know that it's funny, I, 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 people make money out of livestock in so many different ways, you know? You read Clubby's or make.
Exactly, and that's what I was trying to get at earlier, right? I, I just want to leave it at this. I will give you, give you another session, more time for discussion after I say this. I recently took my house, got rid of my garage and made it to three bedrooms. My property value went up about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Is that a bad thing?
No.
No, it's a good thing. That's my kids' livelihood in the long run. We're not going to deter people from being able to make a living. We just want to make sure that they're doing it correctly and clean and being neighborly. That's all we want.
Okay.
That's it. And if you got a problem with your neighbor, go talk to your neighbor. It's that simple. Thank you.
Dave Maynes, eight twenty-four, Palomino. I've dealt with this since I've lived here. Saxon had twenty-seven horses. It was never a lady grass over there. And when the summer comes, the wind blows. It's always dusty. Has anybody considered any of that? Have they talked to any of their neighbors that you're going to have to deal with that? And the other thing I want to know is she's using two different properties. I think you're using more than one property. Are they also required, uh, permit? The person's property that they're using? I would use one to talk to them.
Yeah, it's just ours.
Rachel, two sixty, Home Stretch. So we lease the pasture front of the nice lady next to us so that she can pay her health insurance. I mean, yes, we benefit from it, but I mean, her husband passed away. We take care of her. We help our neighbor Greg across the street. He lets us turn baby out over there. Keeps him busy, he loves it. I mean, we are very neighborly. We help our neighbors. We use our neighbors for business if we possibly can. So I would hope that if there ever is an issue with our property or what we are doing, I mean, please, come knock on the door. I'm happy to fix whatever I need to fix, happy to explain anything. I mean, Dave and I had a conversation in this office for about two hours about being neighborly. I mean, I, if there's, I mean, if you need help, call in manure, get us a call. I mean, we buy our supplements from you. We try to support our town. So please, if there is anyone that has a problem or an issue or a concern, please just come out on the door.
And Mr. Maynes, I, I understand you're the past. We cannot fix the past, but we can fix what's happening now.
Okay, that's fair enough, but these properties, they are already overgrazed. They're badly dirted. So in the summer, it's going to blow to the neighbor, to the, uh, it just, that's how it works. They're not by me. It's not going to affect me. Saxon affects me all the whole time I've been there. And I understand that, that you may not speak at the desk. I speak, how I speak because I didn't hear. I couldn't hardly hear anybody, so I'm sorry if I'm too loud, I can't hear. So that's what I'm trying to say. Have you talked to the two neighbors to the north? Have you talked to them? How do they feel about it?
We have not, I have not, okay? To be honest with you, I did not expect to be running this meeting tonight. I came down here and I'm doing it, all right? So, but if these guys have the fans, they have both had neighbors show up and say that they are very well taken care of and they don't have any problems with them.
Okay, then that's fair. That's all I was asking. And you can hear, so I answer.
We've been kind of talking about it sometime. That's the reason we're conducting this right now. That's the way to ask these people to carry conditional use permits. Each one of these properties, each one of these people that requesting conditional use permits, they're going to be given a standard, so to speak. There are things that they will have to comply with, whether it's dust, whether it's odor, or it's accumulation of dirt. All of that's going to be on there. Um, if they don't comply, then they don't get a conditional use permit. If they remotes, if they remote within the year, good for one year. After one year, they get an inspection and if they comply, they're going to be issued another. If they don't comply, you know, I said dust, the odors, the flies, kind of a topic of discussion. Any of those violations, they don't get a conditional use permit. And then if they continue to operate, then they will be given a citation as we were just saying. And they'll explain why they couldn't comply with the judge.
So does that happen every year?
Yes, yes. So if you guys don't mind, I've got small businesses out of my property and I got conditional use permit because the, the nature of my business. It, it, it's a wonderful process that A, gives people the opportunity to, to try to make a living, do what they love. In my case, I restore cars. So I've got four or five conditional use permits that I have to recertify and have recertified already in the chair where Dave comes and reinspects my, my work area to make sure I did build a, a display room. I got dust control systems because of my sanding, you know, I don't sand it last. I got no smoke when signing up because I don't smoke. There's one of us. But he comes out every year, recertifies that I am meeting those expectations to prevent any of my neighbors getting impacted by my business. Because it's basic, I'm out there, I'm spraying primers, um, base clear coat, I'm sanding. So I mean, I create some dust and I've got my, my paint system down to where my fumes are next to nothing, need PPA standards. So the conditional use permit is a great tool to allow people to have businesses successfully within, within our neighborhoods. And that's the biggest thing is it's got to meet them. Because my business, if I don't meet those expectations, come January first, I'm done. There's just no question about it, so. Uh, and that's why we're doing this is to allow people to have this freedom to pursue their passions. I, I, that's great. I had my own business forever and it was in, in my house. And that's, everybody should be able to make a living. There's places and places to do it and places not to do it. Well, where residential are you? If the neighbors agree, I don't see that there's a problem. I'd like to know if they're going to charge for the neighbor that they're using the property for, for that. I've got seven acres, right? Lease that to somebody. Well, I have to have it.
That is a good question. But right now, uh, we've already said, as Ms. White said before, she said that. Cat's already out, right? They're already doing it. So why not issue the conditional use permit now so we have control of that instead of just letting it keep building and building and building? And then we don't have no say whatsoever. And then the next time we go to do that, we can assess the usage of someone else's property. That's my opinion.
Okay, and that's fine, but we've never been able to control anything daily. I mean, Dave, I've talked to Dave how many nights about the guy next to me on quarter doors? And we can't get anything done. I clean up his garbage every year that flows, I'm on the north. The wind blows up to my property. I'm cleaning up his garbage. We can't take care of that. Are we going to take care of this?
So if I'm right on that one, there's a big difference in the caliber of river now as opposed to last year, ten years ago, twenty years ago. We have a city judge. We have a bunch of ordinances are now in place. We have keys to enforce the things we're talking about right now. And so if you do have a neighbor that has trash going into your yard frequently, once a year, twice a year, every other day, whatever the case is, we contact our, our date, I forget what that. Compliance officer. He goes and issues a citation. That person is now required to stand before the judge to then have the ability to enact fines and different things, which is something that we're never, never had before. never had before. We have that now this year, which is why a lot of this stuff is starting to come together in the way, is because we can actually really truly enforce things now. And so, same with the properties, I understand your concerns and things like that, you know, let's, I, I use an example again, but let's say, was it Heather's? Rachel, holy smokes, come way off. Let's say Rachel rains four hundred horses onto her property, all, all the grass is gone, we have dust storms like crazy, that's where the enforcement now comes in. We can now count the right citations, she has to go before a judge, the, the permits and things like that get canceled immediately, it gets fixed very quickly. And that's the type of stuff that we're looking for right now, we, all of a sudden, we have the control at neighbors to help enforce things now. And the biggest thing is, it's as neighbors, right? If you see a problem with the property in general or jarring you, or around the neighborhood, you make a comment on it. We find out what needs to be done, and what needs to be taken care of, and more than likely, we'll never even have to get the injunction call, because as neighbors, we're gonna fix the problem for the most part. Now, there's always exceptions to the rule, right? However, mostly, if somebody comes to me and says, "Hey, your property smell the cats", well, I'm gonna try and do something about it at that point in time. And I hope as neighbors and as a community, that's what we'll do as well, and that's the whole idea of this whole thing, is that we wanna work as neighbors and as a community, but if we can't, then we have actions to move forward with that will actually make progress and fix the issues. And we don't have to do it in twenty years' time.
When does that start?
It already has.
Time out, time out, okay? As I stated at the beginning of this, this was only for the conditional use permits. We cannot elaborate on any more of this, unless we talk about conditional use permits. All right? So if anybody has anything else to say about the conditional use permits, please speak now, or forever hold your peace until come the next week.
With that said, seven hundred pounds, are you planning on doing a second reading today?
There is no such thing. You either approve it tonight, or you table it. There's no second...
No, there was three readings.
That's where conditional use permits, not the ordinance.
Not for the...
Okay. You, EJ, when I talked to you last week, right, your work, and you said you were going to add something to this, or suggest adding something to this?
So that's actually towards the ordinance, not towards the conditional use permits right now. So, that, that's two different, two different matters, yeah.
Okay, I'm just, I, I think everybody agrees, it's been a long time. They don't wanna ever have what happened on my state two years ago.
Okay, Rick, we've gotta talk about these conditional use permits.
I was gonna say, don't really want that anymore. So yes, we want you to have control of it, and, you know, that, that, you know, it's just on it.
Any other discussion on the conditional use permits? Meeting is adjourned. Seven oh two.